Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the October 19th, 2023 North Hills Board of Education Legislative Meeting to Order. Please rise for a moment of silence and salute to the flag.
... of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. I'm very excited to introduce Mr. Jeff Lupius and Mrs. Jessica Webster, who are here this evening to present the elementary band.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeff Lupius. This is Webster over here. We are the sixth grade band. We've been working very hard in the class. There are a lot more members of our sixth grade band than this. This is our chamber also. These are kids that decided to give up their volunteer at all time to play a little extra in what we that are our regular, you know, regular concert performances. So they're playing for you two songs, so I'm sorry to make you do this gig, but if you please stay again, we're going to do a list of our band.
Our next piece is a little sneak peek for our winter concert. We just finished learning this piece. It's been a lot of fun for these kids. This is Malabaya. Our next piece is a little sneak peek for our winter concert. We just finished learning this piece. It's been a lot of fun for these kids. This is Malabaya.
Okay, I'm told you want to hear everyone's names, but we're going to start right there in the end. If you could say your first name and last name, you want to say your team as well?
Hi, I'm Courtney Klinzke. I'm Team Team Carson.
I'm Blake Venus.
And I'm Team Carson.
Edison Boldy, Team Barron.
Ethan Foral, Team Carson.
Melanie Brock, Team Carson.
Melanie Dactyl, Team Carson.
Kayla McAteer, Team Carson.
Wesley Major, Team Lenta.
Amy Val, Team Carson.
Derek Parker, Carson.
Lily Johnson, Maschek, Team Warhol.
Zoe Seagull, Team Lenta.
Simon Graber, Team Carson.
Alex Cherry, Team Lenta.
Jill Manzetti, Team Warhol.
Abby Wilk, Team Carson.
Bala Marichet, Team Carson.
Owen Carney, Team Carson.
Jonathan Kathy, Team Mok.
Justin Bauer, Team Carson.
Faith Mandel, Team Warhol.
Rebecca Healer, Team Maddow.
Angela Galletti, Team Carson.
All right, thank you so much for having us. Thank you, kids. That was wonderful. Thank you to the families that brought them out today. I always love starting the board meeting that way, so we really appreciate it and enjoy it. Thank you so much. I'll give you guys a minute if you don't want to stay for the board meeting to... Okay, wonderful. We'll move on to board member comments. It's going to be hard to top that part of the meeting, but we'll try. Prior to this evening's meeting, the board met an executive session to discuss personnel and legal matters. I also want to mention that tonight's meeting is being recorded and broadcast live on the North Hills School District's YouTube page, and images may also be posted on the district's social media. Before I pass it on to other board members, I just have a brief tax update, tax reminder that I wanted to read. As a reminder, Keystone Collections has taken over tax collection duties for the North Hills School District. The district's tax office is still receiving and accepting tax year 2022 tax payments from taxpayers who filed federal extensions and are now finalizing their 2022 business tax returns. After October 31st, any tax payments received for 2022 will be forwarded to Keystone Collections. As far as quarterly collections and payments go, if a taxpayer submitted first quarter of 2023 tax payments and returns to the district tax office, these were forwarded to Keystone and they should have received a letter reminding them of the new collector. When the second and third quarter 2023 payments and returns were received, the district returned those to the taxpayer, reminding them that they were responsible for forwarding their payments and returns to Keystone, to Keystone Collections directly. That said, there will likely be some transitional issues that will most likely occur through the end of 2023 as we get used to Keystone Collections taking over our taxes and as taxpayers get acclimated, so we appreciate your patience. It's going to be hard to top that, but does anybody else have any other board member comments this evening?
I do.
No, you go ahead.
Just an update that we acknowledged two weeks ago at our meeting, that we released or were releasing an RFP for a grant writer position, and we have done that within the timeframe that we had said it was the next day. We have not gotten a specific answer from someone yet, but we have gotten two or three inquiries with questions, and I believe Dr. Manarino is meeting with someone next week with a couple of questions, so hopefully we'll be able to record on that in the next finance update.
Ms. Koder?
Yeah, thank you. This past weekend and Sunday through Tuesday, Mrs. Mathis and I attended the annual Pennsylvania School Board Association School Leadership Conference, which was held at the Kalahari Resort and Conference Room in the Poconos, which is, what, 300 miles from here, but only about 20 miles from the New Jersey border. So it was not very well attended from Western Pennsylvania, which was one of my primary pieces of feedback, but with that said, we made the drive and we attended some great sessions. We got to meet some school board members from other districts and we had some nice conversations with some of them, which was really great, and it's interesting to see what other schools are doing. I just, you know, I had some notes that I kind of wanted to mention, and, you know, if the board has any other questions about anything, you know, please feel free to follow up, but just from a high level, one of the things, they have vendors there, and one of the vendors, this woman actually approached us from this Math Nation, and it's a tutoring, a free tutoring program that's sponsored by the Pennsylvania Department of Education, so Dr. Williams is going to be looking into whether or not that's something we can adopt. There was also a vendor there for a similar kind of support system that, for mental health supports, so I think, you know, we'd like to look into that and see if that's feasible for our district as well, which is really exciting. One of the sessions I went to did deal with like burnout and trauma and dealing, you know, how to kind of address that kind of throughout the district, staff, students, administrators, all that sort of thing. I went to, because, you know, I went to like a legal review, which was super interesting for me, and I'm not going to get into the details of all that, but I really kind of geeked out on it. It was really interesting. And another session that I really enjoyed was one that talked about community involvement with the district and kind of making sure that your school buildings and your school isn't separate from your greater community. And I think some of the things that they talked about, this was Lancaster, they have district or building level social workers that kind of monitor that these are, that, you know, kind of come up with these programs, which is, you know, different from our particular structure, but some of the things they mentioned are things that our PTOs are doing and things that our teachers are already doing, that kind of thing, but they did have some other interesting ideas that I'm going to kind of spread around and see if there's any interest in doing that sort of thing and capabilities, because obviously every school district and building is different. I think those are the main things I wanted to mention, but like I said, I'll kind of follow up with everybody with a little bit more detail on the sessions. I don't know if you knew anything else.
I think you did a great job summarizing it. Yeah, I just want to say it was a long drive, I agree, but, and if anybody wants to ride with us next year, I would encourage you guys to come because it's really invaluable, just the opportunity to network with board members from across the state and learn what other school districts are doing, and I found it just really energizing, and I came back feeling refreshed and excited about lots of things that we learned and just being on the school board in general, so, thank you. Any other board member comments?
Yeah, kind of along those lines. This is, it's kind of where my school board role and my job overlap. You know, Pennsylvania was one of 20 states that just received a five-year grant from the CDC to work on school wellness topics, and for my job, I'm one of the people leading that for Pennsylvania, and so on Sunday, I fly down to the CDC for three days of workshops with every state that received this grant gets to send three people, and so we're going to be meeting them and learning from the CDC about school wellness and about, you know, the whole child and all that stuff. And then as soon as, as soon as I get back, on Thursday, we have our first district wellness committee meeting, which is for the first time live, open to anyone in the district. You just have to register for the Zoom link. So if you are interested at all, community, community members, if you are interested at all in student wellness, staff wellness, mental health, physical health, all of that kind of stuff, I would encourage you to sign up to attend the Zoom district wellness meeting on Thursday, and hopefully I can give a little update about what I learned from the CDC and the other states that will be down there.
Where do people find the link for the Zoom to sign up?
Heather posted it on Facebook. Other than that, I don't know.
Any other board member comments? All right, then I will move on to the next item, which is a motion for the board to approve the minutes of the September 7th, 2023 committee meeting with action and the September 21st, 2023 legislative meeting, both of which are attached to the agenda. Is there a second?
Ms. Spade, I have a second.
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Manarino has a brief superintendent's report this evening before we move on to the student representatives' report.
So this was real quick. I thought after what we did this morning at Westview, I should just throw something together real quick and show you a couple of things, but since I'm up here, hey, reminder, no school tomorrow. Hey, kids? All right, but with that, it's the end of the first quarter, so that, it's pretty crazy how fast that first quarter goes, and so that's sort of what tomorrow's Professional Development Day is about, it's tacked on at the end of that first marking period. So we're at the end of the first marking period, no school for students, and just some upcoming things to remember. Parent-teacher conferences and election day on November 6th and 7th, and there's also no school for students then, too. Helping me out, aren't I? So that Thanksgiving break is right around the corner from there, November 22nd through November 27th. There's also no school, which is why it's really important that we talk about that two-hour delay tonight on our Agenda for Education. All right, so today, they placed the final beam on the exterior portion of Westview, and since it was the final beam that was going up, they invited us to sign it, and so I was there with Jessie and Caitlin Hope from the administration, and then Bob Lancy is the man at the end with the red jacket on, and he's the general contractor, and then the two gentlemen in the middle work for Site Logic. So we were there as they swung the beam into place, connected it. I have so much respect for the guys that are standing on top of that building, 30 feet off the ground, and installing that iron onto the building, but it was pretty cool. It's one of those phases that, hey, we're getting close to the end of this building being done and buttoned up, so they're dried in, is what it's called. It's going to be done by Halloween, which means that that building will be, so the addition will be done as far as the exterior is concerned, sealed off to the elements, and begin to really move forward on the inside, which puts us on track to have that done well in advance, or well in time for the January deadline that they had set for them. So it's really neat in there, you're starting to see the spaces come together with the library and the classrooms and the offices that are on the first floor, so today was pretty cool. Final metal beam is being secured on the outside of that building, so they did a drone video of it. No sound, just threw it together. Somebody helped something. Alamoa, I don't know. This is like three hours, just hold time. Yeah, these two guys are standing there walking around like it's nothing, putting that beam on there, installing it, and moving forward. It's a pretty cool day at Westview. All right? There you go, girls are up.
Okay, we have a pretty big report today with the end of the first quarter, there's been a lot of crazy stuff happening, it's been so busy. So first, obviously, last weekend was homecoming, and the dance itself was a lot of fun, but we have some pictures of the game because we crowned our new king and queen. Our king was Sam Voff from Orchestra, with the first runner-up, Colter Mathis, and second runner-up, Josh Kim. And on the girls' side, our queen was Avery Gallagher, and our runners-up were Haley Coin and Maggie Voff. And we just have some pictures from the night. It was a lot of fun. Okay, cross-country invitational season, last, or two Saturdays ago, we had volleyball invitational, and our boys varsity took home third place with top 25 finishes for Kayden Leitner, Charles Vega, and Dana Sotiano. And then actually, today, we had our tri-state championships, which is basically just like a dry run for what feels, which is next week, and our top eight girls and top 12 boys went, and I don't know, the results aren't completely out yet, but I think that Kayden got like 26th place, and he's looking in a pretty good spot to maybe go to state, but we're really excited for that. And then the golf team visited Westview on October 4th, and we taught some golf vocabulary, and we all taught them how to yell "war," which was really loud in the fourth-grade classrooms, and we read some golf stories and we played putting games, and it was just so fun to see, and we're hoping to encourage future generations of golfers, and for me, it's really like interesting to see if I can get more girls involved and potentially a girls' team in the future for our school. Last night was the first high school band concert. We had performances from the Wind Symphony, and then the Chain Orchestra, which Alyssa's in, and then the Wind Ensemble, which I'm in, and we also had special guests from the Alligator Band. Also in band, Stadium Review is on November 9th at 7:00 p.m. in the middle school auditorium. They'll be doing pre-game march show and journey show, and I asked my friend to send me a picture, just on a marching band, and this is what she sent me, so just enjoy that picture. And then on the honors band side of things, we had a lot of students qualify for either honors band or honors orchestra, and those festivals we held in mid-November, so that's really great to see. So these past couple of weeks, we had a couple more senior athlete recognitions. We had recognition for boys soccer, slow pitch softball, girls volleyball, and girls' soccer, and next week, football band and cheer will also celebrate their senior athletes on October 27th. Chunk or Treat is also rolling around, it's actually on Saturday, from 12 to 3:00, and it might be moved inside depending on the weather conditions and the forecast. All of the student clubs have some really interesting themes lined up for this, and it is free to attend, but donations are encouraged in the benefit Make-A-Wish and Children's Hospital of Pittsburgh. Incident Decision Day is also coming up this week. On Tuesday, during the school day at the high school, there are some really great schools attending, and students have the opportunity to be instantly accepted into that school, and last year, there were 44 offers of admission. In Fall One Act Play News, it has been going excellent, and we actually just ran through all three shows back-to-back for the first time today, so we're really excited about that. Tickets are on sale right now for either showing on November 4th or November 5th, so I recommend you see it. The Thanksgiving Food Drive will occur on November 8th from 4:30 to 6:30 at North Hills Christian Church, and during this timeframe, we are accepting food donations, and although you might not be able to see it on that flyer, there's some suggested items that you might be able to donate, and this is a collaboration between National Honor Society and class officers. In Middle School Drama Club News, they have begun to audition for their musical, The SpongeBob Musical, and they will show that early in February, and tickets go on sale in January.
Thank you, Alyssa and Ella.
Congratulations to Colter.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to public comments. This evening, we have one person signed up for public comments, so I'll read the public state, public comment statement first. The board recognizes the value to school governance of public comment on educational issues and the importance of involving members of the public in board meetings. The board also recognizes its responsibility for proper governance of the district and the need to conduct its business in an orderly and efficient manner. We would like to invite any resident taxpayer or employee of the North Hills School District who wishes to address the board to come forward at this time. It is our policy to strongly encourage such public participation, inasmuch as it provides the board with an important source of ideas, as well as informs us of many concerns in the district. The board has limited public comment by a participant to five minutes in duration, and no participant may speak more than once per meeting. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and broadcast live on the North Hills School District's YouTube page, and images may also be posted on district's social media. Mr. Spinelli is our only public comment this evening, so Mr. Spinelli.
It's not so much an education comment, I just wanted to wish the best of luck to all those running for board positions next month, either election or reelection. I'll be working the polls again at Westview Gym, keeping an eye on things and helping those who need help, so good luck to all those running, and since we're not meeting next month, I just want to also wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and to all the families out there, too, and we'll see everyone in December.
Thank you, Mr. Spinelli. Happy Thanksgiving, you too. The next group of items were discussed at the last meeting, so we will vote on them as a consent. So the superintendent recommends, and I so move that the board approve consent items 1 through 14. Is there a second?
Ms. Spade, I have a second.
Any discussion on any of those items?
Just as I always do, I will say that we did not receive any feedback on the policy, which is not at all surprising. Thank you.
And I'm, again, just going to use this delay vote as a way to suggest strongly that we look at our school start times, which are recommended to be 8:30, and we are one of the earliest school start times in the state.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Mrs. Poniatowski, you're up with athletics and activities.
We have two field trip requests tonight. One is for the competitive cheerleading squad to compete at UCA's National High School Cheerleading Championship in Florida on February 8th through February 12th. The students will miss two days of school, and it's being funded by the Cheerleading Boosters Club. And the second is that the board approve a field trip request for the, for 47 students who are part of the Lind Ensemble to perform at Carnegie Hall in New York City in April 26 and 27, and the students will miss one day of school for this, and this is a pretty big honor. I think Ms. Mathis is going to talk more about it, but it's pretty cool, they get to do a sound check and performance at the hall. There's a field program including their performance. They have posters on the outdoor marquee advertising the North Hills performance, there's audio recording, and they just take pictures during their performance. It's pretty cool. So the superintendent recommends, and I so move that the board approve athletics activities items 1 and 2.
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. Yes, as Mrs. Poniatowski said, I think it goes without saying, it's just a really prestigious honor to perform at Carnegie Hall, and I'm excited for the opportunity for the music department to get to take the Lind Ensemble there, and I just am continually impressed with the music department and how they look for different opportunities for our students to perform and grow as musicians, so I think it's fantastic. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mrs. Spade, you're up with personnel.
Personnel items are discussed in secondary sessions. Superintendent recommends, and I so move that the board approve personnel items 1 through 14.
Is there a second?
Mike's in through, Joe, second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I believe, Mrs. Nice, you have a report under Community and Intergovernmental Relations.
I do, yes. So the Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee met on October 5th to discuss the North Hills Community Service Award. In February of 2021, the Board of Education established the Community Service Award to honor those who are making significant contributions to our community in the North Hills School District through their time, talents, and dedication outside of any volunteer work done for their employer. Nominations were submitted by members of the public, then reviewed and voted upon by all members of the school board. For 2021, the nomination process and timeline was established for the award to be presented at the board's June public meeting. For 2022 and beyond, the award was to be presented at the board's January public meeting. However, due to timing issues, the recipients have been recognized in June of 2021, 2022, and 2023. The committee discussed that June seems to be better than January for the award presentation. Additionally, the committee noted that this is an award from the school board, and as such, the nomination should come from members of the school board.
The board also recognizes its responsibility for proper governance of the district and the need to conduct its business in an orderly and efficient manner. We would like to invite any resident taxpayer or employee of the North Hills School District who wishes to address the board to come forward at this time. It is our policy to strongly encourage such public participation inasmuch as it provides the board with an important source of ideas as well as informs us of many concerns in the district. The board has limited public comment by a participant in five minutes in duration and no participant may speak more than once per meeting. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and broadcast live on the North Hills School District's YouTube page and images may also be posted on district's social media. Mr. Spinelli is our only public comment this evening. So Mr. Spinelli.
It's not so much an education comment. I just wanted to wish the best of luck to all those running for board positions next month, either election or reelection. I'll be working the polls again at Westview Gym, keeping an eye on things and helping those who need help. So good luck to all those running. And since we're not meeting next month, I just want to also wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and to all the families out there too. And we'll see everyone in December.
Thank you, Mr. Spinelli. Happy Thanksgiving, you too. The next group of items were discussed at the last meeting, so we will vote on them as a consent. So the superintendent recommends an ISO move that the board approve consent items one through 14. Is there a second?
Ms. Spade, I have a second.
Any discussion on any of those items? Just as I always do, I will say that we did not receive any feedback on the policy, which is not at all surprising. Thank you.
And I'm, again, just going to use this delay vote as a way to suggest strongly that we look at our school start times, which are recommended to be 8:30, and we are one of the earliest school start times in the state.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Mrs. Poniatowski, you're up with athletics and activities.
We have two field trip requests tonight. One is for the competitive cheerleading squad to compete at UCA's National High School Cheerleading Championship in Florida on February 8th through February 12th. The students will miss two days of school and it's being funded by the Cheerleading Boosters Club. And the second is that the board approve a field trip request for the, for 47 students who are part of the Wind Ensemble to perform at Carnegie Hall in New York City, April 26th and 27th. And the students will miss one day of school for this. And this is a pretty big honor. I think Mrs. Spade is going to talk more about it. But it's pretty cool. They get to do a test sound check and a performance at the hall. There's a program including their performance. They have posters on the outdoor marquee advertising the North Hills performance. There's audio recording and they just take pictures during their performance. It's pretty cool. So the superintendent recommends an ISO move that the board approve athletics activities items one and two.
Thank you, Mrs. Spade. Yes, Mrs. Poniatowski said, I think it goes without saying, it's just a really prestigious honor to perform at Carnegie Hall. And I'm excited for the opportunity for the music department to get to take the Wind Ensemble there. And I just am continually impressed with the music department and how they look for different opportunities for our students to perform and grow as musicians. So I think it's fantastic. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Mrs. Spade, you're up with personnel.
Personnel items are discussed in each section. Superintendent recommends an ISO move that the board approve personnel items one through...
Is there a second?
Mike Stentru, you have a second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I believe, Mrs. Nice, you have a report under community and intergovernmental relations this evening.
I do, yes. So the Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee met on October 5th to discuss the North Hills Community Service Award. In February of 2021, the Board of Education established the Community Service Award to honor those who are making significant contributions to our community in the North Hills School District through their time, talents, and dedication outside of any volunteer work done for their employer. Nominations were submitted by members of the public, then reviewed and voted upon by all members of the school board. For 2021, the nomination process and timeline was established for the award to be presented at the board's June public meeting. For 2022 and beyond, the award was to be presented at the board's January public meeting. However, due to timing issues, the recipients have been recognized in June of 2021, 2022, and 2023. The committee discussed that June seems to be better than January for the award presentation. Additionally, the committee noted that this is an award from the school board and as such, the nomination should come from members of the school board. Therefore, beginning in 2024, board members will be asked to nominate individuals for this award by April 1st. Once all nominations are received, members of the board will be provided a ballot containing all nominees and will be asked to submit their ballot to the superintendent. The votes will be tallied and the winner will be recognized at the board's June public meeting. Since this is not a policy item, no action by the board is needed to revise the parameters of the award.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Little, do you have a legislative report this evening?
Yes, a brief update. Last week, I attended the Senate Committee Education Committee hearing at Westinghouse Academy. That was in the city of Pittsburgh. A lot of the discussion there was around CTEs and the funding and what they can do throughout the Commonwealth. Very interesting discussion, the lack of funding and how much impact they can have. But just really needing a strong source of revenue from the state and investment in it. Also, our executive director, Allagana Intermedia Unit, Dr. Robert Shear, testified as well about what IUs can do in supplementing with these CTEs here and whatnot. So it was a very interesting session and just wanted to move forward back.
Thanks very much. Mrs. Rennebeck, I believe you have a Beatty report for us.
Yeah, just real quick. You hear us talk a lot about the Skills USA.
You hear us talk often about the Skills USA and that North Hills typically wins in the Skills USA competitions. There are also officers, one of which in the position of reporter, Austin Kessler from here at North Hills, and the Family Career and Community Leaders of America officers. The vice president this year is Helene Adink, and that is for the culinary department. And Beatty's annual Thanksgiving fundraiser, once again.
Looking at me.
Just as a reminder, orders are taken until November the 10th or if they've received 80 orders, which does happen. So basically get your orders in ASAP. Pickup is on Wednesday, November the 23rd, right before Thanksgiving. If you go to Beatty's website versus me giving you a phone number or an email address, you can see how you can actually make the orders. And the options include full dinners, sides only, and turkey only. And they range up to feeding 15 people. That's it.
It's a lot of food, but a very well-organized pickup process. So I highly recommend it. Okay. So I would just like to announce that the next meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Tuesday, December 5th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the middle school LGI room. And remind everybody that there's no school tomorrow, as if you need to be reminded. And since there's no other business this evening, I will move to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.